Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting, today, Tuesday, October 10th. And if we'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, the first item we have is to check on our agenda. Are there any changes or adjustments to today's agenda? Any changes or adjustments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. All right, at this point, we have our public comment period. It's an opportunity for the public to address the county board on any matter of county concern. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? I see none in our audience. Are there any written comments that have been received by commissioners or by our administrator?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. We will move on, then, with our consent agenda items. Is there any item a commissioner would like to pull this morning? It's a shorter list than last time. All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley.
I've seconded.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. With that, we'll move on to the Highway Department. And I see that we have our Highway Engineer here, Robbie Haas. Good morning, Robbie.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Went so fast, I gotta scroll down to my agenda. All right. So the first item on here is approving the, or awarding, I should say, the contract for the Alfred Creek Bridge replacement. The low bidder on this one was Northland. You can see it's for just over $764,000. Funding through this comes from bridge bonds, actually, state bridge bonds. So this is wholly funded, very similar to our Sawbill Creek project that we just finished up through state bridge bonds. So I guess, does anybody have any questions?
Commissioner Starley, this is in your district. Any questions or comments you have to make?
No, I don't really. I think it's all good to get it repaired.
There we go.
Commissioner Mills?
How do you do such a good job?
How much time do you have? No.
It was rhetorical. Thank you for your work on this.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. Is there a second?
Support?
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support to approve the contract to Northland Constructors for the Alfred Creek Bridge replacement. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Awesome. Thank you. So the next one, similar story, a project we're doing up in the National Monument, up in Grand Portage. It's been a wonderful project we've been working on, basically, since I started. Every entity you can think of, every acronym under the sun, has basically been involved with this project from day one. But it's been a really great collaborative effort between the Park Service, the band, and the county to really deliver this. It's very community-focused. This project was created from a need in the community up there, and so we're excited to finally get this one done and get it in the ground next season. So I recommend awarding to Redstone Construction for a little under $2.6 million. Does anybody have any questions on this one?
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment that when I was in Grand Portage for Indigenous Peoples' Day, lots of people were asking about it. It had been seen on the agenda, and they're very excited to see it moving forward. Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I was just trying to think back of when this project started. It had been, it's been a while, but...
It's been a while, maybe even before I got here, because I know there were some notes about it, and that was a little over three years ago. So I think the conversation had started. It was really out of just how to, you know, what's the best way to preserve that historic bridge that's up there? And so this'll do that. We're pulling traffic off of the bridge. We're building a brand-new timber bridge. It's actually overbuilt, and so to really accommodate, because we know that stone bridge kind of backs up every so often with water in the spring, and so the new bridge will really accommodate all of that. It pulls cars off of the historic structure, creates a lot more walking areas up there. So it would be a really good project.
Absolutely.
And again, half the bridge is funded with state bridge bonds. Sorry, I don't think I mentioned that. So again, more bridge bonds to help offset any local costs.
All right.
And confirmation that the stone bridge stays.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's quite a landmark up there.
Yes. Oh, yeah, that stays put. That's kind of the whole point.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work.
Madam Chair, if I could, before we let Robbie go this morning, I know that we are getting close to completion of the Fifth Avenue West project. I'm wondering if you could say a few words about kind of what the expected timeline is for that.
Sure, right on the spot. No, that's fine. Yeah, I think everything is actually expected to wrap up in the next couple of weeks. I know paving is taking place, starting probably today, and Wednesday and Thursday of this week. And then really, you're talking about, yeah, finishing the paving and then sodding and striping, and that's it. You know, I think, I haven't been out there yet this week, but I think, you know, a lot of the concrete work and the forming is either done or, you know, getting done. And so, yeah, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, this'll just be wrapped up and done. So I appreciate everybody's patience with this project. We knew it was gonna be intrusive going into it, and it's one thing to say it, and it's another thing to live it.
For sure.
But it needed to get done. We all remember the condition of the road prior, and so I think, once this is done, between the fifth project we just did and '61, the last couple of years, you know, we'll give Grand Marais a break a little bit, and before we dive into some other stuff.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Robbie. I was gonna ask, wasn't, is Eighth Avenue on the docket?
Yeah, so there's a few other county roads within city limits, and so Eighth Avenue is one of them. It's also in relatively poor shape. And so that's something, I think my next steps, and we'll jump in the gun a little bit, but that's okay, is, you know, this went really well. This is a partnership with the city of Grand Marais. They were able to do a lot of utility work that was really, really needed. And it's a great opportunity. We're ripping up the road, and so it's a great time to do utilities. And so I think what we're gonna do is, once this wraps up, is have that conversation with the city again and say, you know, timing-wise, when do you want, when could we do Eighth? You know, let's do it together. Similarly, Broadway is another county road within city limits. Wisconsin is another one. And so, you know, but Eighth and Broadway, I think, are of foremost thought right now. I think in our 10-year plan, they're mentioned, but that can move around a lot, so it just kind of depends.
All right. Madam Chair. Commissioner White?
And I would like to thank you. North Road is open.
Yes.
And we can make beeline to the Hovland Post Office these days. And it's just like, oh, but you really slow down and creep across the bridge just to enjoy a new bridge.
That's right.
It's really nice, so.
Well, thank you.
And you were ahead of schedule, yes?
Yes, they were a little ahead on that one.
Yes.
So that one, I think we had 90 working days on, and they finished up a little early. So that's always nice when that happens.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never heard of such a thing.
Clean and shiny. It's pretty nice.
That's right.
All right. Commissioner Mills?
And just, I've heard, of course, grumblings, right, from our Highway 61, two years, and then this year, huge disruption for three years, and, you know, after plenty of other disruptions. But I did want to share that I've also heard really positive feedback, both about the partnership from the city, to you and us, and then also, just with the final product, how it's turning out.
It's turning out really good.
A lot of praise there, too. So thank you for your good work there.
Wonderful. Thank you. I'll let our technician out there, Jacob Baker, has been doing a wonderful job. Yulen's been wonderful to work with, so I will pass along those kind words.
Jacob's been great with communicating with the public. I mean, just fabulous.
Absolutely.
Good to hear.
All right. Anything else? All right, well, thank you so much. We appreciate all that you and your crew do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agendas through Human Resources, and this is about a job description related to Soil and Water Conservation District.
All right. And before we jump into that, I see Elena Hansel is here, who can provide some background on the position itself. But I want to note, and you may have seen the email that I sent out late yesterday, that we don't currently have an HR Director. Technically, that position is vacant, but I'm very happy to announce that Allison Plummer has accepted an offer to fill that position. And so she will be starting, we're expecting now on October 30th. So, but in the meantime, we're kind of just working with Kathy Polly, who's our HR Generalist. Leah Ekstrom has been consulting with us on things, but she's not in that role anymore. She's in our MIS Department. So I'm going to leave it to Elena to maybe say a few words about this position and just kind of some of the, some of the background on how, why it was classified the way it is.
Yeah, so our, my, I met with my board, and they've approved it, just so you know, and I've been working closely with my Personnel Committee for the Soil and Water Board. And we have a service agreement, which is why we need to come forward to the commissioners, just to make that clear, because sometimes that gets foggy, too. And so we originally, prior to our current position, which is a district administrator/conservation tech, it was originally just what that job description describes, where it was just somebody doing finances and doing district, just helping out, period. And it was only a part-time job. We wanted to try to make it a full-time 15, 16 months ago, to try to hopefully, because the market was much different then, to get somebody in there. We have somebody, great, Stephen, but he, with changes in the office, he would like to transition into full technician, and it would be beneficial to then have somebody only focusing on just one job instead of two very complex jobs. So we would like to move it back into a job. We've, with the One Water Shed, One Plan, the workload is becoming enormous on my plate, so I plan on shifting a huge chunk off from my plate onto that administrative plate, and that will help with making the position up to 30 hours. We can't afford over 30 hours because we're so grant-funded. It's gonna be tight as it is, and so we wanted to be able to offer benefits to, due to office space. We're gonna telework the position because we don't have the space to keep people in the office, but it's hybrid because we need the person to come in also for board meetings and for other meetings. So we did that, and because the responsibilities are less, well, they're big and important, they're less than what they were with a conservation technician. The technicians, you know, sometimes managing $500 to $1 million projects and grants, we felt like it was okay to move the job classification back down, down to the 160. So that's everything in a very brief, quick nutshell as to why it's gotten changed and why we've gone this direction.
You did a great job with that explanation. I thought I was gonna have to explain that, and you did. You were very succinct and clear, so thank you. All right. Any questions for Elena?
I have a question. I'm wondering about going from a bachelor's to an associate degree required, but you don't say in that line item what degree. And what made you decide, associate, you needed an associate's degree?
Yeah, so we, that's a good question, and we've gone back and forth in the Personnel Committee, and I think, I mean, we can easily add the bachelor's back in, but what we've found, even with technicians, too, that sometimes you can have an associate's degree and a lot of experience, and you can still be very well-qualified without that bachelor's degree, because a lot of it's just, it's finances, it's running QuickBooks, it's doing that work. And so we felt, the board felt like we might have also a better applicant pool if we kind of take that around, and maybe we'll have somebody here that might be like, oh, I am qualified, even though I didn't get my bachelor's degree, I still have worked hard for a degree, and I have that experience. So we want to make sure that that associate's degree is with experience, so it's not somebody coming in right out, fresh off of school. So that's why we thought the combination would be okay to do that. And bachelor's degree, I don't, I think I might have missed that the language wasn't in there. It could be either-or, and so we can definitely add that back in. But the associate's degree, we have that, I think, on all of our, at least the technician positions, too. It can be either-or, just associates with the experience.
Well, I was in favor of that.
Good.
Because...
I never know. That's why I'm like, I don't know.
But I wanted to question how you made that decision. I think it's important to not exclude people, because people can do a job without a bachelor's degree.
Definitely. You just have to be willing to learn, is what has been my experience, and easy to work with, so, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could add to that, we don't do ourselves any favors if we are too restrictive in job descriptions, too, because this labor market is just so tight still. I mean, things have loosened up a little bit, but, yeah, I think that's really a wise move, so thank you.
Yeah.
The board was very, very supportive of that, that's for sure. Other questions or comments for Elena? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description, job grade update.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Mills, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your time, Elena, and all that you do. Well, we're clipping along. We're up to item 6, Auditor Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a request to name myself as the authority to make claim to the state for unclaimed properties. What this is, is similar to when we send out checks. Sometimes you don't get cashed, and if, and if people don't make, you know, another request after a certain period of time, you send that information to the state. They put it on their website, and anyone that sees it and says, oh, my name's on there, can then make the request to the state, and so forth. So this is really kind of the same thing. This is our money that's out there, discovered on this state website. It's not a lot, but one of the requirements to make a request is somebody has to be authorized. So this resolution is just to authorize someone to go out and make that request.
All right. Well, thanks for that explanation. Any questions for Auditor Powers? Not, I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution to delegate authority to Brady to make these claims.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have our second quarter 2023 general fund budget review.
Yes, and we're a little behind. We didn't do a Quarter 1 review. Those are typically not very informative in any regard, because first quarter of the year is, it's heavily weighted towards some of the early revenues that we get, the big revenues, and so forth. That's not why we missed it, but we were heavily into the audit and other work. But we'll try to get on track from here on. So this is really through the end of June, and we'll be coming back with the third quarter before too long. So this is just half of the year. So what you'd expect is 50% of your expenditures in a perfect world, and 50% of your revenues. What you actually see is 71% of our revenues have come in, and that's primarily because of the payment in lieu of taxes, federal and state, that come in early in the year. And our expenses are a little below 50%. That's not unusual, but it's probably a mark mostly of our conservative budgeting, department by department. So both are good numbers for our cash balances. And I've highlighted a number of things that are outside of that 50% realm by considerable amount, and I've put some explanations down below. I do, and I'm gonna leave it to you, if you want me to go through line by line, or just pick a few to talk about. One I do want to talk about directly is the revenue in Department 041. That's the General Financial Administration. That's our interest revenue. And as you can see here, we budgeted $400,000 for the year, and we've already received $574,000. That's because of the inflation, and then the Federal Reserve raising the interest rates. Takes a while for markets to catch up. We didn't see numbers like this last year, even though the Fed was starting to raise. But this year, even in your short-term rates, we put a lot of our money into the, called the magic fund. It's that governmental fund all counties can put their money market, short-term money into. And those are in the 5% to 6% rates, 5 and 1/2, and so forth, depending on 270 days or 360, or what have you. So that's what's driving this. And so what we're doing right now is, we're trying, we know this isn't gonna last, or we don't think it is. I mean, if you knew that, you know, we'd all be billionaires, but we don't think it's gonna last, you know, because the inflation has come down, and they're gonna start, you know, changing those rates again, and we would think. But we want to book as much of it long-term as we can, so we're investing in like five-year CDs. That's about as far out as you can go on most of our stuff. So trying to, you know, capture these rates for a longer period of time, rather than what we've been heavily into is like agencies, federal agencies, but, and they have decent rates, but, you know, they can, people can buy those out early, and so forth. So these will, you know, put us in probably a better position for a few years, anyway, capturing those long-term rates, so. And maybe by the time we get to the third quarter, we could talk about, you know, changing, if we want to, changing a little bit of our budget if we need to for next year. I'm hesitant to put a lot of money into interest revenue to offset levy, just because of the changeability of markets, but it might warrant, we can look at it, anyway, if this continues.
Any questions for Auditor Powers?
Yeah, so I'll just leave it to questions.
So how would the board like to approach this, Commissioner Hawkins?
Well, I guess I don't have any questions about this, but I would just like to commend the staff, Kelly, for the investment strategy. I mean, that takes a lot, I know, to follow when to invest things, and where to invest things, and how long. So I appreciate the work that's done to make this a positive.
Thank you. I'll make sure Kelly hears that, so. She's done a good job.
Absolutely, absolutely. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brady. I recently read that the bond markets have crashed, or are crashing. Is that, how might that affect any and all of this?
Which, which bond markets?
Yeah.
Okay. The...
So am I not?
James Bond.
They crashed, well, yeah.
Yeah, it hasn't, I haven't, I haven't heard that. There's things, you know, there's dramatic changes in markets all the time that are real temporary, but I know that, you know, that, let's say, municipal bonds were a hot market for a while, and maybe that heat has cooled off. I'm not sure.
Yeah, and it's probably federal bonds is what...
Yeah.
Yeah. And then this is not super relevant, this, this item or conversation, but do you think it would be advantageous for our property tax revenue to be more consistent and less twice a year? Is that, is that something that would be advantageous to our organization or your office, or is that just more work? Or, so instead of collecting property taxes twice a year, if there was a way people could pay monthly, say, or have auto withdrawal monthly, or anything like that? I'm just looking for ways to have efficiencies, after talking with our state auditor, you know, my mind gets spinning and thinking and...
Yeah, well, that would be a state issue. We don't have any control over the timing of that. That would be a...
Well, it wouldn't be a mandatory. It would be an option for people. And I just didn't know if that would be helpful for you and the office and us, or not at all. And you don't have to answer now, but just, you know, it's just a thought I had about after our meeting, so.
I've never, yeah, that's new to me. I'll think about...
Yeah, I was just like, well, why not? Everyone else, you know, my phone bill is...
Right. I don't think we would, it's, my immediate reaction is, it would, the amount of work involved to manage that monthly and update your tax system, unless there was an automatic way to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would be a, my immediate reaction is that would be a nightmare.
Yeah. That's what I, that's what I was looking for.
Thank you for being a straight shooter.
That's what I was looking for.
Yeah, with, but you think, you know, with technology, with the right technology, I could see something like that in the future.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the general fund budget report for second quarter.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Administrator, yours?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, commissioners. Items 7A and 7B should look familiar, because you've already approved these resolutions. What is different about each one is that, after speaking with Mary Ann Conboy at Minnesota Management and Budget last week, I learned that we actually have to have language in the resolution that specifies the priority level of each application. I did indicate that the CIP bonding application was our first priority in the application itself, but the resolutions also need to contain that language, so that there's a direct link to the board action and the level of priority. So, again, you have approved these resolutions before. The only difference in these is that they contain that additional, whereas that says this is our first priority and this is our second priority.
And I can state that when this was presented to our House Legislative Group last week up in Ely, that priority was made clear, but it is important that we have it in writing. So, any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution of support for the capital request for $8,700,000.
Thank you much. Is there a second for that? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. So we have a motion and support. Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Motion passes, four to one. All right. Now we go on to our bonding application for North Shore Waste.
Same thing here. This is previously approved by the board, and the request is for $2 million. The total project cost is $5 million. The project sponsor has put up some of his personal capital for, for the project there. Also, I think they've been promised about $500,000 by IRRB, and then they're also continuing to pursue federal funding for the remaining balance of the project.
And North Shore Waste also presented up in Ely last week, provided a video for members of the House Committee, and it was very well-received, so. Questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution of support for North Shore Waste's state financial assistance in the amount of $2 million.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. On to updates.
All right. Just wanted to share that I, last week I was at a conference of the Minnesota Association of County Administrators, and it was also a joint conference with the MACRME, which is AMC's Human Resources Directors Association. And so there's a lot of discussion about the 23 legislative session and a lot of the employment law changes that were, that were passed. We talked about the Paid Family Leave Act, which is not taking effect until January 1st of 2026, but there's a lot of planning going into that. And I expect that, I expect that we'll be having more information about that. I think what, what is clear at this point is that there's still a lot of unanswered questions about how that's all going to be implemented. The, the other thing is that the, and I'm going to have to refer to my notes here because I always get the name wrong, earned safe and sick time, this is another act that was passed to provide paid time off for seasonal part-time and temporary employees who can earn one hour of paid leave for every 30 hours worked. And the eligible uses of that leave are for a variety of reasons, for example, including if you are a victim of domestic abuse, or you are being stalked and you need to take time away from work to deal with that. That's, that's the safe part of the legislative name. And so, anyway, that's, that's something that, that is going to take effect January 1st of 2023. So I was talking with Brady, I'm sorry, 2024. And so I was talking with Brady yesterday about making sure that we have things set up in MSA so that we can make the appropriate payroll or do the appropriate accounting of that, that leave time.
Yeah, that's, that, they were already, they've already done that, so they just installed it on our system. So at least we'll have, we'll have the right coding to plug in. So then it's just, the, the main thing will be the policies, you know, how we do that when we start.
And so there was also talk about the legalization of cannabis and how that affects employment law and what you can and can't do in terms of testing employees. Bottom line for us is our DOT, our, our employees who are subject to DOT requirements, that is our equipment operators in the Highway Department, they have always been and always will be subject to testing, random testing. And so that's something that, that would pick up THC. But for most of our employees, we are, you know, we, basically, this is no different from like alcohol abuse. You can't come into work drunk, you can't drink on the job, same thing with marijuana. And so it doesn't substantially change the way we operate, it just calls out that, that new item in the list of substances that people cannot use or be under the influence of, on the job. So that's, that's another thing. Wanted to mention too, one thing, one great thing about going to conferences is the, gives me the ability to speak to my peers in other counties about projects that they're dealing with that are similar to ours. And we have a number of, of counties in the state who have recently completed or are undertaking new capital projects. And so talking with them about kind of how things get phased and the process for making, making things happen. One thing that I, I was talking with the administrator from Aiken County, and she, she was saying that for, you know, we have, so we have the two elements of the CIP. One is the deferred maintenance on all of our buildings, and the other one is the Justice Center. And for, for any kind of specific project, like a new building or addition, in order for us to be competitive for the bonding requests that we've submitted to MMB, we need to start working on actually putting together designs for, for that project. And so that's something that I'm going to be talking with CRBPS about and also convening an internal team of department directors who are going to be, who are going to have a, a role in that project. Sheriff Pat Eliasen, Robbie Haas is going to be involved because of his experience with doing road projects, which are different from building projects, but a lot of the processes are very similar. Allison McIntyre will be part of that group as well, and probably some others. I haven't fully finalized who's going to serve on that group. And I think it'd also be useful to have a commissioner on that body as well, so, yes.
You think maybe a retired judge might, or?
Good catch. I have been talking with Judge Cuso, who recently retired. He's graciously volunteered his, his time to assist as a, as a consultant on that, so, which is good because he's been involved with projects in Carlton County and other places where they've had to do new courtrooms. And so having not just the judge, but also court administration, having the Sixth Circuit involved in that discussion is going to be vitally important. So lots of good, lots of good information from the conference and, and then, you know, I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot about these things in our District One meeting on Thursday in Hinckley, because it's, we're all going to have to be familiar with these issues and be ready for their implementation, so.
Any questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for those updates. We appreciate it.
For sure.
All right. Well, item eight on our agenda this morning is a board letter of support for the Great Lakes Initiative grant application. And Tia Parks is here this morning. She's our environmental specialist and county ag inspector, and welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
So Tia's purpose in coming today is to talk to us about the grant application that she would like us to support, but she has a little background information about what was accomplished through the grant dollars that she received last year for the same grant. But now, coming up, we have more opportunity for more funding, but I think a snapshot of what's already occurred will be valuable for us. Thank you, Tia.
Yeah, for sure. So I think I'll just start off with a description to remind you all what this grant funding is. So it's the GLRI, the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative. And so I'll just give you a brief summary. It's, was launched in 2010 with efforts to support conservation in the Great Lakes region. One of their focal points is invasive species management. And so the Forest Service gives out money every year for funding, and this year they have about 1.2 million dollars. And we are one of the counties that volunteer the Great Lakes region, especially from Minnesota, so we only have three of us, and we get to be one of those special ones. And last year, we got $25,000 in funding. The maximum was 50, but we just asked for 25 to start. And this year, the funding has gone up for what we can ask, so $100,000 is the maximum, and we are going to shoot for that. And so with the $25,000 that we got just last year, this actually started in May, funding did, and so a list of what we've done so far in the last several months. We've done 21-plus invasive plant populations managed on public and private lands, five school outreach programs at Oshki and Grand Portage, Great Expectations, Birch Grove, Sawtooth Elementary, and Cook County High School, two native species plantings, that includes seeding and plug planting, one invasive species brewery event at Voyager Brewing, which was a hit, and three educational tabling events at a local business called The Fisherman's Daughter. That's just where we do a pop-up table and we talk to everybody that comes by. A presentation given to the local chapter of the Master Gardeners Club, if you're familiar with that, a radio show with WTIP and the Northern Gardener through University Minnesota Extension, one capstone project was provided to the Master Naturalist students that are in their course right now, so they're actively doing that. And then two meeting owls and accessories were purchased for the community center, which was really great for them because it helps us, because the CCIT or the invasives team does their meetings there, and for the community center and for all the people that use that for meetings, a really great thing for them to have. So now on to the 100,000 that we're requesting for this funding year, which will be funding year 24. So if this is accepted, we'll hear about that at the beginning of 2024, and then it'll start in May. And so we have four goals. The first one is to increase our ability to manage invasive plant populations through contracts. So as we all know, we're pretty low on human resources in Cook County, and invasive species management has not been missed by that. So having some contractors that can come up and help us in our right-of-ways specifically is what we'd be looking for with that, and some larger private infestations on city lands and other private property for contracts. So 50% of that funding would go directly towards that, and so that would help us with about 80 acres worth. Doesn't seem like a lot, but in invasive land it is. So next, outreach. So we want to be able to continue and to elevate what we've already done, to be consistent with that, because it hasn't necessarily been in the past. So we want to continue doing an annual brewery event, continue to go to the schools every spring and work with them. They've really enjoyed that and have already been asking for us to come back, so it's been really awesome. But to continue that with our supplies and to be able to elevate that, add in some special programs, et cetera. And then item three is to continue our native revegetation projects. So we discussed highway department projects where we want to be able to plant native species, so actually plug them in rather than just doing seeding, which seeding is still a part of that process. It has to happen at every reconstruction or construction project. So we'll still be doing that, but Sawbill Creek, we just did some seeding on that, and in May we'll be planning to do some native plugging there. So to be able to continue that and to do that on more projects is our goal. Further on, number three is monitoring and mapping, which we've been doing a lot of over the last year and a half. It's a big part of what we do. So it's a lot of travel, a lot of collaborative time with Forest Service, Soil and Water, everybody, but we go around and we assess populations that we know exist and find new ones. And then lastly on item three would be collaborative management. And so with obviously the monitoring, mapping, we have to go out and actually do things to try to eradicate or to at least control populations so they don't get out of their means. But this just allows us to further be able to work together to make that happen in Cook County. Lastly, goal number four is expansion of our partner knowledge and connections. So this funding is directed mostly at us being able to attend conferences, and when I say us, up to two of our partners, so hopefully myself or someone in Soil and Water, whoever it might be, for two of us to be able to go to approximately eight to 10 conferences over the next three years, which are huge for us. I know James was just talking about conferences and what they're able to give us, and we learn a whole lot because science is ever-changing, especially with plants. We can barely understand humans and each other. Plants are even farther beyond aliens in their own right. But yeah, so we want to be able to go to conferences and to learn and to develop our strategies and continue learning. But yeah, so those are our goals. Again, being able to increase management through contractors, continuing outreach, native revegetation, mapping, management, and then expanding our, our ability to go to conferences.
That's great. Very, very important goals. Commissioner Starley, anything you want to share since you're our primary representative on the Cook County invasive team?
Well, I think all of these PowerPoints that you just mentioned that I wrote down very fast are all really very, very important. And I do see progress, you know, around the county when I drive on some of the backroads and, and appreciate all the work that you and your little team do together. And I missed the last meeting because it was scheduled when we had our board meeting. So heads up for the next meeting and appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
Starley. Any other questions or comments for Tia? Commissioner Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you. Is this a one-year grant or is it a multi-year grant?
So the grant is due to be completed over about two years, but we have asked for extensions in the past, so we're expecting that this one's going to be a two-to-three-year funding.
So you, you like reimburse then? Is that how it's funded?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Other questions?
Where does lupin fall into this?
You're going to get me in trouble.
You don't have to answer. No, no.
No, that's okay. That's okay.
Yes, yes. That's my MO.
It's kind of one of those things where if we help someone with private property and they want to get rid of their lupin, which are 50% of the population maybe, maybe less here in Cook County, I can help them figure that out. But it is kind of a, a two-edged sword economically. So people do love them and it is a great attraction. I have people that come to my house and cut the seeds and take them with them, and I just stare, but, and that's okay. But then there's obviously the environmental threat that they cause. And so as long as we try to keep those confined to our roadways, that's the most important part about lupin, but it is okay to, to see them and enjoy them because they are pretty and they do their job well.
Thank you.
Could you explain what their environmental threat is, what lupins do out there?
Yeah. So visually lupin are actually one of the easiest ones to see what they are doing. So if you look at a, a patch of lupin, you can see that it's the only plant within that little area. If there's anything, it's going to be growing outside of it. But lupin every year, just like a lot of plants, they expand, and so they keep growing. So if you see the one that's in your driveway or whatever, you can see that it probably grew maybe two or three feet. If you mowed it, maybe 10 feet. But yeah, so they do outcompete native species. They're pretty dense in how they grow, but they aren't as bad as some species because their seeds are rather large, if you have noticed those pods that they have. So they can't go as far on their own, so they don't get carried by wind or anything like that. So they're kind of on the edge of really bad and not...
So then how do we know that daisies aren't invasive species?
They are.
Or hawkweed, yellow hawkweed.
Oh, okay.
So we should be getting rid of everything? All of the wildflowers?
Just the invasives.
Who knows? Just the invasives, which are...
Non-native.
Daisies, wild...
I think oxide daisy is, right?
It is, yes. Oxide daisy and hawkweed are, but to go further into this, to, to answer your question, we have levels of ranking, the invasive species, and so Minnesota has a noxious weeds list, which are our highest priority that we take care of, and it's mandatory, it is the law that we control them, whether it's on private or public property. And so hawkweed and oxide daisy are not on that list. And so with both of those, again, we're getting a little convoluted here, but with both of those, they're kind of ones that have made their way here and expanded about as far as they're going to go. So I mean, like, if you have grass, it's probably full of hawkweeds and daisies, and so they've, in a sense, become naturalized, and don't hold me to that because it's not official, but they've kind of just become like normal grass, like fescue or anything like that.
Dandelions.
So it's like an evolution? Like, you know, like how things evolve? And so once we lived down here and now we're living up here as a daisy, and so we weren't wanted then, but now try to live without us, because everywhere...
And then too, with the ranking process, it comes of, again, what are the economic or environmental, human health harms that these cause? And so, I mean, some of these plants that we control are plants that will physically burn you, third-degree burns, or they can completely take out a population of one of our native species. Let's just say large-leaf aster, it'll take out an entire population of them. So again, it's across the board what these are going to do. They all have their own superpowers or lack of, but yeah.
What about stinging nettles?
Stinging nettles? I, not something that I concern myself with, but you can eat them, so.
Yeah, and they really hurt if you try to...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't say it, but I think you're getting into the weeds.
Oh, God.
In all seriousness, though, have we found any buckthorn up here?
We have.
Okay.
Yes. So actually last year, with the help of one of our residents, it was reported to the DNR and then reported to me, buckthorn, it's actually on Department of Transportation property near Fall River. It was a pretty large population. And then actually tomorrow, I am collaborating with Soil and Water and the US Forest Service, and we're going to go out and do a survey to see how far it has reached. The Department of Transportation did get right on it last year when I talked to them about it. They chopped it up and have been monitoring and found some outliers, but we're going to go a little farther into the adjacent private properties and, you know, see if we find any more. But then there have been a couple of pop-ups. There was one little sapling here at the courthouse. Don't worry, I ripped her right up and hung it up in dry in a tree, so that one is okay. We don't expect anything to come from that. And then there was a more recent one near Eighth Avenue that was found on private property, but it is small, not large enough to set berry and seed. But yeah, buckthorn is a, is a scary one. We did get some research in this year, which is really great to know, that their seeds are only viable for about two years, which before that, it was thought that they could last much longer, six-plus years. So now we know that seed hits down on the ground, can only really... So now we know that seed hits down on the ground, can only really set seed and germinate for about two years, which is really good knowledge for us.
Thank you.
Will you be coming before us for a grant for goats anytime soon?
You know, I have talked to Robbie about that a little bit. I think it'd be funny. Maybe we'll recruit the put-in-pit goats.
There you go.
Give them an extra job.
Or again, in all, kind of all seriousness, if you wanted to collaborate with Arrowhead Electric, I know there's a lot of concerns from residents about spraying under the lines and they don't spray, they have to mow. But if they're goats or sheep or huh?
We have lots of opportunities to manage and different ways to do it, which is really great. It keeps things interesting.
Absolutely. All right. Well, is there a motion to approve a letter of support from the county board for the invasive team's application for the GLRI funding?
Some will venture.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Hawkins. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Tia.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you for your work.
Thank you.
All right, item nine. So we'll start with some commissioner updates. Let's start with Commissioner Storley.
The one update that I have right now is from Eric Forsberg in regards to Tannenbaum. If you've gone by, you've seen that they have brought in multitude of loads of sand to cover the area and protect the land right now. So starting in spring of twenty-four, twenty-five, they'll be contracting out for the whole building to start coming down. So that is a big decision that we were kind of, you know, depending on when will this happen? So.
All right. Well, we appreciate that update. That's an important.
We'll be starting.
All right. Commissioner Mills?
I don't think I have anything to update this group. I just got back from a trip. I mean, it's not directly related, but as we explore the option of municipal dispensary for the newly legalized cannabis, I think it's really important that we get as much information as we can just about the ins and outs and the risks and the benefits and just the operations is something I'm not too familiar with myself either. And so on my trip, family trip, we toured a college with my daughter in Ashland and then headed down to Chicagoland for a wedding. And on the way, I stopped in Ironwood, Michigan, where there is a dispensary or three, or I don't know how many, and had the experience of going through that. And they had a drive-through dispensary. So you could order online and then go through. It's still only a cash business. They also had a section where you would walk in and then they would, it was like a waiting area or something. I didn't go in the main building, but I did go inside just to check it out. And it was different than the one I toured in Illinois and different than the one I toured in Washington. So just very interesting to see how things are done. In Illinois, the tax is thirty percent. And in Michigan, I believe it was eight percent. In Minnesota, it's ten percent. So it's interesting just to see those, just how that affects markets as well. And every state has different laws, but it's, I think, still really overwhelming, especially as I said before, my background isn't in retail business. But it's very interesting, just the level of activity around that. Packed waiting rooms, lines out the door with cars, and just people just chugging on through. It was something to see. So if any of you get the chance to find a dispensary on any of your journeys, I would recommend checking them out just for that perspective. In this particular case, the family was with, we were all in the car together, so that was a very good educational moment for my kids, asking questions about the legalization, about the substance, just about culture, all that kind of stuff. And of course, they have many, many questions and their friends do too. So just doing what I can to find out more and I'll share whatever I find out. So that's probably the only, that's the most recent thing. And before that, it was all just basically wedding prep, so.
All right. Commissioner White?
Yes. The Northern Counties Land Use Board, they are going to be a serious discussion about changing their name, feeling it doesn't really, it's just too cumbersome. So anyway, there was great discussion again about, well, this was an interesting fact. Until nineteen thirty, well, 2.8 million acres of land in Minnesota is tax forfeited. Or ninety-five percent of that is in northern Minnesota. That's a lot. So there was a discussion about the reorganization of the In-Lua program, multiple layers, a lot of acronyms, really in the middle of doing this yet on the state level. And so there was a question, one big thing was, there's a problem with needing wetland credits in that unlike in Cook County where we have wetlands, trying to get wetland credits for big highway projects or bigger projects sometimes slow down the projects because they're not available. So that's what this issue is all about. So there was discussion about that and it's just underway at another level. But just before it all ended the other day, there had been a question about what are the proposed levies for the different counties? And I got most of them down, but just as a matter of interest, the proposed levies for each of the counties in this, in northeast, in District One. St. Louis is proposing a 2.93 levy. Carlton is just about four. Cook County is nine. Koochichin is eighteen. Roseville, if that's correct.
Roso.
Roso is seven point five. Lake County is three. Aiken County is three point seven. Lake of the Woods is three and a half, and Marshall is five. So that was just interesting. And then the one question I had came up, they were talking about mining, tamarack. There are Indian monies that come and has Grand Portage, do they contribute to the county? I should have asked Bobby yesterday. There's a mining project, do they? I didn't do detailed enough questions. I'll have to ask Bobby about this. But I was then, moving on from the Northern Counties land use, I was up in Grand Portage yesterday having a conversation with the tribal chairman, Bobby DeShaw. And he was happy to hear that their water specialist, Margaret Watkins, has been invited to participate in the Northern Counties land use because that committee focuses a lot on water and mining is in part of that. And as their spokesperson said, that they have been, as a group, trying to get better communications with reservations because all the information they get is coming from mining companies. And so I had forwarded an agenda to Margaret, knowing about this, and she was unable to participate. But I got a call the very next morning from John Chell, who said, when can we get her to a meeting? So they made that connection and with the support of tribal chair to get a seat at the table there. And I thought that was, can only be beneficial for everybody. Can only be beneficial, so. There was again yesterday, a meeting with the council on aging, and as always, they are soldiering on with the reorganization of their finances and getting funding and one financial institution to be the holder of their money and getting their accounts put in place and a new, they're going to be calling with just a question from Rowan about security, just a factual thing, not requesting his help, but just what is he aware of that might be beneficial for their organization for keeping their information safe. But the bigger one was about communications because of the, it's like first alert that the hub manages. Is there something better out there that they're not aware of yet that they should be offering to the participants of our county who make use of this service? And this is paid for by the hub. Users pay a thirty-dollar-a-month fee, but if the batteries are dead or the services they provide to replace the batteries, that is all just covered by that thirty-dollar fee, which is pretty much breaks even. They don't make much money, which is not the point, but they're wondering if they had another sort of, rather than exclusively landlines, if there was another way, is there other technology out there that a person who's fallen in the middle of the woods, could they get out? Is there something out there that they were unaware of? So hoping that the best person in the county who might know something would be Rowan. After I attended another one of those meetings where it's every other sentence has at least two, if not twelve, acronyms in it, talking about emergency communications. And so I know there was discussion about that, but I could not be specific. I haven't had a chance to get all of my notes interpreted through Rowan to know what they were talking about. But they're on it. They're on it, so that's about it. Go ahead, question. I'm done.
Not a question, but yeah, you made me remember. And this was the same day as our last meeting, and so that slipped my mind. But we did have a chance to meet with Auditor Blaha, State Auditor Blaha. And that was a whirlwind meeting, I would say, but very informative and basically gave kind of the state of the auditors as very bleak as far as having enough auditors, having enough CPAs, having enough accountants. And they're seeing this in the public sector, they're seeing this in the private sector. The private sector can outpay the public sector and it's maybe not impacting them quite as much, but it's still impacting them. So she was looking at, and maybe you heard this on the radio, I guess, but she was looking at different ways to address this issue and changing some of the requirements. And schooling is something they're looking at. I brought this up in another regional organization, just asking about their challenges and had somebody in finance on that board and said, yep. I mean, almost repeated everything Auditor Blaha said. It was just interesting to get that confirmation, that, just the corroboration. And, you know, one of her solutions is kind of like, well, we've got to grow our own, you know, much like any other position that we're having shortages of. I was encouraged to hear just her approach and her passion and her background. I hadn't met her before, so that was pretty neat. But she had lots of praise, of course, for Brady and Kelly and just the things that we're doing here in Cook County. I think it's safe to say her conclusion is we also need to be recruiting people to Minnesota and getting more people here just so we can have the workers that we need and the professionals that we need. So I don't know if there's anything else takeaway there, Brady, that you had?
Well, just, it's affecting mostly the smaller organizations. The large ones like us are not affected. We're, let's say, a prime agency for audits, but the smaller ones that they would do, they either don't have the staff to do them or they raise the price presumably because they have to work overtime to do them. So they're all out there searching. So that's one of the potential changing standards is instead of an every-year audit for some organizations, can we gather enough information with every other year, things like that? So you don't want to go down that road too far, but I mean, the reality is you have to, probably have to make some of those changes in order to keep some kind of audit trails going on all these organizations, so.
We talked a little bit about the blockchain stuff and just AI and how that could be able to, because it's number crunching, right? It's confirming all these things. And with the blockchains and the, I forget the term, but it's a ledger, basically, a shared ledger, there's no need for trust. It's confirmed with every transaction. It's kind of interesting and way too new and way too out there for us to adopt that or anytime soon. But yeah, for example, the CHB, we just got our bill for an audit and it was forty thousand dollars. That's one of the smaller organizations that, but it's a regional one that we couldn't find an auditor for a while. And then when we finally did, it was much more expensive. I mean, larger organizations will still be affected, but only in costs, right? We'll still be able to get it done, but there's some smaller organizations that can't get it done. And then because of auditing requirements, then they're in trouble, so. Never a dull moment.
Commissioner Hawkins, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I just want to make note of upcoming meetings, that we don't have the Arrowhead Regional Corrections Meeting on this list. That is going to be on October twentieth here in this room.
Great.
So I just noticed that this morning.
Thank you.
That's not on here, so we just need to add that.
We will get that added.
And make sure that, you know, will be a good opportunity for the community or other commissioners come and meet that board.
Great. Thanks.
And we'll make sure that gets noticed as well.
Yeah.
And I thought of one thing, after you thought of one thing. I took the tour of the golf course on the west end part of that thing. Honestly, it's my first real time on a golf course. I still have post-traumatic stress from the expanse of green, mowed green. That's just, it's just, it's impressive and a little off-putting, but anyway. It seems like a highly, a well-managed facility, but what do I know? But it was a complete tour. We got to have the pro, the golf pro. I got to ask him any question and he had all these answers. And my one takeaway was, because he even said, the perception is of the public, is that this golf course is on the levy and is costing taxpayers money. And I said, yep, you're right. So he said, but we don't. And I just said, show me, show us the data. Go back a few years and show us the numbers, all of the numbers. And while you're at it, I would like to know, and I'm sure they have this information, how many local people utilize, where do their users come from and what's the frequency? And all the data, just really all the data, because the one thing that was brought up, if the, this was the Wild Hair idea, we'll just sell it. Sell it, all the property value, all the way around the golf course will retain its value. Property values are not going to go down in Cook County for any reason. And then we'll take all of that money and we'll fix our buildings in some way. You know, this is just pie in the sky out there type of stuff. But the problem that was brought up quickly was that if you get, it's a public golf course, and if it is sold, sold, there's no guarantees that it will not then become private, which will then perhaps have. which will then perhaps have membership fees that would be prohibitive. So nobody from the county would be able to use it. Plus, I'm also believe that we cannot, it cannot be sold. I think that's a setup. I mean, not, not being naked on that. I think that's how it was established, is that that is a public entity because of the funding that was used to create that. It cannot, it cannot be sold to a private party?
It can. It's just, it's just how you do it. You, you wouldn't want the bonds to be taxable. So you would want, for example, you'd want to sell it and be able to pay off the bonds immediately to take away that issue. But the other thing is there's no, the land around the golf course is not owned by the golf course or the EDA.
No, it's private.
So there isn't, yeah, there isn't that land to benefit public.
Except for property taxes, when it's sold down the road.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would just say, I went on the tour along with Commissioner White and was able to see, you know, the beautiful golf course, but also to look at the problems that exist in that golf course. And we had a chance to look at the bunkers, look at the edging that was protruding and sticking up, looking at the bank of the Poplar River, how it had washed away and what had happened on that particular hole. I mean, we had an opportunity to, to see, you know, all the potential that that golf course provides for the community, but also look at all the needs that are there that are going to have to be addressed, whether it's sold or whether it is retained. So it was a really excellent, excellent tour. And Heath Ekstrom and Mary Somas provided the tour. And we spent about three hours there and just very, very valuable.
And I would like to add that I got questions answered that I didn't even know I should have been asking. So that was really good. I mean, that's really good because I, it was really good. So I have confidence in, in what I was told by Heath. You know, he, he had a lot of answers. And so I'm just expecting that you'll be getting a lot of data before we have to make any decisions on the golf course.
And there was a document that was sent out to all the commissioners with photographs so that people that were unable to attend could take a look at, at some of the problems that are existing, not only with just the golf course, but looking at the maintenance, the old equipment that's being used, welded together, patched together. You know, we talked about staffing, just lots of different things. But it was a very comprehensive view of the golf course operations overall. And I think we appreciate that greatly. Commissioner Mills?
Well, another, thank you for, for sharing that. And it brings up, it's kind of a, a primer for some of our other discussions that I think we'll be having. And one of the comments I've heard, and I think Steve Serbas shared this view as well, is just that if, we do need, we are, there is going to be a reckoning as far as what we're going to be doing with that. And, and it's going to be a, a good, good, good conversation and quite a process, I'm sure. And a lot of it comes down to, as you said, Commissioner White, it's, it's public, right? And so if it is sold, it would assumingly be private. And so of course, the, the big difference between public and private is, public is, is looking for the benefit of the everyone and the private is looking for, for their own bottom line. And so if we're, if we're trying to make decisions for our community, whether it be golf courses or apartments, and, and, and we're, we're really struggling with, with the changes that are happening in our community, that the way things go with the private is gonna, is gonna price everyone out. But if we can somehow work together to keep things for the benefit of everyone, then I really think we're all going to be better off. But that gets down into philosophy a fair amount. But it's also becoming reality here in Cook County as, as we're all witnessing things change. And, um, yeah, it's, it's staggering.
Well, Commissioner Mills, and that is to that point. I asked, how many local people have the opportunity, take the opportunity to golf here and with what frequency and at what cost? Because it was explained to me, different, they don't call them packages, but there are different packages you can buy, X number of rounds and what the stipulations are. And, and that with as little as four golfing outings, you can pay for one of your packages, but then you can continue to keep golfing for the season. I was flooded with information on a topic that I know nothing of, but that was information that I'm expecting will be put in writing for everyone to see to, to make valid decisions on it. And the, as we talk, wild discussions because I was sitting there. So anyway, so you, we could get a buyer who just wants to turn the whole golf course into a goat farm or something like that. You know, I mean, just, it, they don't, I mean, there's a lot of money out here, out, not here, but out there coming in to a very limited property resource. So you could think the worst things and it could actually happen. So I, I, yeah.
Yep.
But then on the other hand, how much can the taxpayer afford to pay? And as we looked at what our, you know, I mean, that makes more, needs more. I need to learn more, but if we're at, all these other counties are lower, what are, what are we giving our, our taxpayers as far as their levy? Because our levy is at nine and Lake County is at three.
But we also have other counties at eighteen.
One. And then we're the second highest. So what are we giving to our taxpayers that they are not, is my question. So giving, what are we letting our taxpayers pay for that they're not letting their taxpayers pay for? So it's just questions, just questions. I'm curious, so.
And we'll have a lot of opportunity at our District One meeting to, to speak with those other districts about their levy. Every county will be given a presentation.
Yes.
We'll talk about that. So we'll have much more detail after Thursday. Commissioner Mills?
And still on the golf course idea too is, I don't golf. And haven't and don't know anything about it, but, but have been, but have been there and, and familiar. I worked on this, on the ski hill for years and, for ten years. And one of the things that excites me in our discussions with the EDA and just what to do with the golf courses, it doesn't have to be just golf. We can incorporate other recreational activities that more people can enjoy to be more diverse. But as you stated, the original intent made it pretty restrictive. And then, but I think it's been a long enough time where that intent has expired, but there still are some restrictions. But it's just sifting through all that and figuring out what we can do, what we should do and what, what we want to do and, you know, what's going to benefit the all of us.
And not to get anybody in trouble, but there was a, it was shared that, you know, we got, they've got big screen TVs or at least one in that, in that place where they have food. But by their original set of guidelines, they cannot just have people come in and watch football.
So that's why you can go in there and take a swing during the winter and there's a big screen for you to work on your swing. That's there for that purpose.
That's kind of a walk around, while football's on the screens and you can socialize. I mean, that's a huge thing. It's a, it's a place for our county people to socialize, which is huge.
We could imagine a conference center, a wedding venue, you know, there's so many potentials.
I think we've done that before, we ended up with a YMCA. So let's not get too carried away with that, okay?
Madam Chair, I would just like to make a comment because I've been involved with the golf course for a long time. And when I travel, I would visit golf courses and I always wonder, why can't the chalet be open in the winter? So I did speak to some of the board members and it started last year. And they serve burgers.
Yes.
And they're going to be open a lot longer this year. It isn't just to swing the golf. It's for, because they have no options. Where do you go to get a burger in the winter, you know? And two big screen TVs to watch a game. So they have the staff hired now, so they're going to be open many more days. So the local people can go and watch a game and have camaraderie and support the golf course.
That's awesome.
I think that's great.
Really good. So I had an opportunity to attend our Firewise meeting at the end of September. And the focus of our meeting was all kinds of concerns about a potential government shutdown. Would there be US Forest Service firefighters available in case a fire broke out? I mean, just lots of concerns. And so the primary point of the meeting was for Mike Keyport to kind of put together a public service announcement to assure everyone those are considered essential workers, our firefighters with the Forest Service. And there would be no interruption in the event that there was a wildfire, even if the government was shut down. And that will of course be the case in November if that were to continue again. But anyway, it was really interesting that that was such a big concern at that, that moment in time. SWCD, given the fact we approved the voluntary transfer this morning of Stephen Janicee to Conservation Tech One, will be posting the district administrator position. And then I had a chance to go to the Rainy Headwaters Vermillion River One Watershed One Plan. And we approved the last three sections of that document. So there's an internal review going on. And in the near future, there will be an opportunity for a public hearing. And what we'll likely do is have that on Zoom and have several locations where members of the public can come. You have to remember that watershed spans from Cook to Lake to St. Louis Counties and even a little corner of Koochichin. So we'll have more than likely several different locations that people can come to in person and then a big Zoom screen with everybody that will attend from the public.
Was Grand Portage or Boyce Port or somebody?
Yes. Eighteen fifty-four has been involved and there has been an invitation directly to Grand Portage as well. You bet. I appreciate the fact that not only am I on that group, but Stan Toll. And we have really advocated for that and it's been. We are in the midst of planning for October twenty-sixth. That's the Fall Gala at Up Yonder for Visit Cook County and sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. And our legislators, Senator Haushild and Representative Scraba, will be coming on that day. It will not be like what we had last winter. If you recall, that was, you know, lots of opportunity all day long to meet, but it was not connected with the gala. So we're going to have a very short period of time. It won't be all commissioners. There'll be something here, an overview for everybody in this room, probably at one o'clock on that afternoon. And then they're going to be going out and touring different locations. So they're going to take an opportunity, for example, to go out at the Coast Guard Station. And Bobby and Pat Eliasen will speak with them there about that. But anyway, it'll be a variety of tours, but just a little bit different approach than last time. And lastly, I just want to acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was celebrated in Grand Portage. There was an event for the community, as I mentioned earlier, on Saturday. But I'd just like to remind our community that it's not just a one-day event, it's a call for action, that we should be mindful of this throughout the year. And just really important to keep that in mind in all the work that we do. We have recognition of staff in, following all the lengthy list of meetings we have coming up. And I'd like to take this opportunity, James, to thank you for three years of service as our administrator. We appreciate your leadership, the direction you're taking and your look to the future.
Thank you. It's a privilege.
Kyle Monson in the Assessor's Office, two years of service. Michael Running, the Law Enforcement Center, six years. Stacy Schmidt in Public Health and Human Services, two years. And then at seven years, both Bob Thompson in the Assessor's Office and Ellis Watch and Public Health and Human Services, seven years. So we appreciate these staff being with us and providing all the support that they do and all the benefit they give to the residents of Cook County. And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner. So we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries, we are adjourned.